I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, rule call has been taken. Okay, very good. Before we get into the agenda tonight, I would like to introduce our new city administrator, Mr. Lou Leoni. Lou, would you say a few words?
Yeah, first, I just want to say thank you to everybody, to the council staff, to the citizens of New London for really welcoming my family here. It's taken a huge burden off me, you know, taking a family from, what, 900 miles and planning them here in New London. They're loving it, I'm loving it, it's been great. Now, just so everyone knows a little bit about myself, I'm originally from Illinois. I spent the last four years running a city in Kiowa, Kansas, and did a lot of work there with utilities and really helping the city prosper. And I hope to do the same thing here in New London. And I am very grateful to the council for giving me this opportunity.
Very good, thank you. All right, you have in front of you the agenda for this evening. There will be a little amendment to the agenda. Item number three under Board of Public Works will be deleted, and the date on public work should be eight, three, nineteen.
Eight, five. Dave, it should be eight, five.
Eight, five, okay, thanks, Mike. Should be eight, five, nineteen. All right, so with that, do we have motion to adopt the agenda? Mike so moves, Lori seconds. Any other changes? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, the July ninth, twenty nineteen minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of July nine, twenty nineteen.
Motion to approve, Fred seconds. Any changes to the minutes? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, authorization to pay bills in the amount of one million thirty-one thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars and forty-six cents. Fred, make the motion. Fred? Make the motion on that.
Oh, I'm making a motion to approve the bills in the amount of one million thirty-one thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars and forty-six cents.
Sir, second?
Second.
Bob seconds. Any changes or questions on the bills? If not, please cast your vote. All voting yes, motion carried. All right, next, I will now open the public hearing on ordinance to amend the zoning map. This is the second reading. Does anyone have any comments on the changes?
You know about where that property is?
It's right there, Tom.
No, it's got the legal description, but I don't know where it is.
There's an address, I just saw the address, it's on South Water Street.
Well, that's the place they want to turn into an apartment building, right? Coming off this building?
It's the one behind.
One seventeen East South Water Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in there, it's in there someplace, yeah.
Next to post office.
Right behind the post office.
Family of grounds.
With the tax services and.
No, by the old, by the auto parts store there.
All right, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Not, I will close the public hearing on the ordinance to amend the zoning map. Next, I'll open the public hearing on the proposed amendment to municipal code regarding public nuisance. Again, this is the second reading. Is there any comments on that? Hearing none, I will now close the hearing on the proposed amendment to municipal code regarding public nuisance. Is there any public comment tonight? Seeing no public and no comment, hearing no comment, let's move on to standing on special committees, starting with Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Board of Public Works met on Monday, August fifth, two thousand nineteen. Meeting called to order at four thirty. First item was wastewater treatment plant update. It was brought up, there are no questions or concerns regarding the monthly report. The next item was discussion on possible change for change orders for wastewater treatment plant digester upgrade project. The digester upgrade project is going well and staying on track. There have been several change orders needed throughout the project. Many of these changes were determined as areas were opened up through the construction project. A few others were upgrades that would cause less maintenance issues in the future. One change order brought to the board was consideration to remove an old, non-compliant ladder that provided access to the digester roof and change it out with a stairway which would be safer to use for regular maintenance, especially in the mid-winter. Motion made and seconded to bring that to council later tonight. The next is report on July twentieth, two thousand nineteen, storm damage and cleanup process. City staff has been very busy over the past few weeks dealing with storm damage cleanup. DTAC was hired to assist with cleanup and removal of the piles from the drop-off sites. Midstate Tree Service and New London Tree Service were also hired to aid with removal of dangerous trees and branches. City staff will continue to pick up remaining curbside damage brush through August sixteenth. The next was a director's memo. Years of service, Ben Gruel, wastewater treatment plant superintendent, has completed nineteen years of service as of July third. Luke Hammond, equipment operator, completed four years of service on July twenty-eighth. Next month's agendas will be ATV use in New London, no further business, motion was closed at five fifteen. I would like to make a motion to bring to council a change order for the putting a ladder up. The old ladder was unsafe, you couldn't get your feet in, you probably would have fell over backwards. That will mount to no more than fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, sir, second?
Second.
Ron seconds. All right, any questions on the motion to approve a proposed change order for a new stairway to be built to the digester roof complex in the amount of no more than fifteen thousand dollars? Any questions, comments? If not, please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion approved.
And that's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mike? All right, next, finance and personnel, Mr. Zog.
Finance Personnel Committee met Wednesday, August seventh, at four thirty. The council chambers, the meeting was called to order by Chairman Morok. Motion by O'Connell, seconded by Barrington, approve the agenda. Carry eight zero. Adam Sury, our current city assessor, presented a change, the name of the company from Keystone Appraisal Group to Sury Group, Inc., in a contract for service for years January one, two thousand twenty, through December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Motion is made by Fossey, seconded by Pinch, to approve the current contract with a change in the name from Keystone Appraisal Service to Sury Group, Inc., carried eight zero. After general discussion, a motion is made by Barrington, seconded by Pinch, recommended to council approval of a three-year contract for assessment services with Sury Group, Inc. at carried eight zero. Media and mapping specialist, Bessie Kepin, presented the IT contract for PCN cell solutions, owner Keith Gowdy. Motion is made by O'Connell, seconded by Steinhorst, to recommend to council approval of a two-year IT contract for the years twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, at carried eight zero. Motion made by O'Connell, seconded by Steinhorst, to recommend to the council approval of furniture purchase for the city administrator's office, at carried eight zero. Finance Director Radke talked about her scheduled meeting at Alagame County and the possibility of city taking credit card payments for tax collections. Fees associated with credit card process will be passed to the consumer with no additional cost to the municipalities. Motion made by Zog, seconded by Steinhorst, to recommend to the council denial of a claim against the city. Motion carried eight zero. Finance Director's report, this were reviewed, Finance Director's report was discussed. No comment during the questions and answers. Motion made by Zog, seconded by Barrington, to go into closed session for nineteen eighty-five, subsection one, subsection C, to discuss personnel matters. Carried eight zero. Radke excused. Motion made by Zog, seconded by Barrington, to come out of closed session. Session was for information purposes only, no actual stake, and carried eight zero. September, Finance Person Carmel Personnel Committee meeting will be held on the regular day, that being Wednesday, September fourth, four thirty. There being no public comment or further business. Motion made by Barrington, seconded by O'Connell, adjourned at five fifty-five, at carried five zero.
Okay, motions?
I move that we approve a three-year contract for assessment services with Sury Group, Inc.
Sir, second?
Second.
Mike seconds. Any questions on the motion to approve a three-year contract for assessment services with Sury Group Incorporated? If not, please cast your vote. Tom, you have to confirm. Thank you. All voting yes, motion approved.
I move that we approve a two-year IT contract for years twenty twenty-one.
Sir, second?
Second.
Lori seconds. Any questions on the motion to approve a two-year IT contract for years twenty twenty-one? No questions, please cast your vote. All approved, motion carried.
I move that we approve the furniture purchase for the city administrator's office.
Second.
Ron seconds. Motion made to approve the furniture purchase for the city administrator's office, any questions on that? Not, please cast your vote. Fred, you have to vote.
Tom, you need to confirm.
All voting yes, motion carried.
And I move to approve the denial of the claim against the city.
Second.
Lori seconds. Motion made to approve the denial of the claim against the city, any questions on that? Not, please cast your votes. All voting yes, motion carried.
And then we have the license list, do we need to approve that?
Yeah.
Okay, move we approve the license list as listed in your.
Second.
Dennis seconds. Okay, motion made to approve the license list, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, thank you, Fred.
That concludes our business.
Next, Parks and Rec, Mr. Bisso.
The Park and Rec Committee met on Tuesday, August sixth, at four thirty. Meeting was called to order at four thirty. Alamon Steinhorst moved to approve the agenda, seconded by Alamon Herter, motion carried by all. Approval of the July second, two thousand nineteen minutes. Alamon Foshey moved, seconded by Alamon Herter, to approve the July second, two thousand nineteen Park and Rec Committee meetings, motion carried by all. Public comment relevant to items on the agenda, there was none present. I consider for approval a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to submit urban forestry catastrophic storm grant application. With the recent storms across Wisconsin, the governor declared a state of emergency, and the DNR has opened the urban forestry catastrophic storm grant program. Grants range from four thousand to fifty thousand. The city may be eligible for some grant funding for cleanup efforts. This grant requires a resolution be passed by council authorizing staff to apply for the grant. Applications are being accepted until September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Alamon Zog moved, seconded by Alamon Steinhorst, that council consider approval a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to submit a DNR urban forestry catastrophic storm grant application. Motion was carried by all. Director's memo and report was not identified, chairman's report not identified, committee members' report not identified. Next month's agenda items, committee will discuss two thousand twenty budget and re-recess for the tour of the city parks, properties. Alamon Dean moved to recess, seconded by Alamon Foshey, at four forty-five for tour of city parks and properties. Motion was carried by all. Following locations were visited, the St. John's Park to view the new downtown dock, Franklin Park, and Hatton Park to review recent storm damage. Re-convened meeting at municipal building following tour of the city parks and properties. Alamon Dean moved at five forty-two to reconvene, seconded by Alamon Herter, motion carried by all. Alamon Dean moved to adjourn, seconded by Alamon Herter, at five forty-four, motion was carried by all. I would recommend to council to consider for approval a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Services to submit urban forestry catastrophic storm grant application.
Okay, Fred seconds. All right, any questions or comments on the motion?
Do you know?
To approve?
Do you know how much we're applying for, the four thousand or the fifty thousand? Anybody know?
Fifty thousand. Not saying we're gonna get it, but we're gonna try to.
That's what the application is, okay.
Oh, let's go high.
Very high, that was a lot of work.
Any other questions or comments? Not, please cast your ballot. All voting yes, motion approved.
All I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Bob. All right, next, Planning Commission, Mr. Steinhorst.
Thank you. The July twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission meeting was called to order at five P.M. The agenda was adopted, rule call was taken, and the minutes of the June twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission minutes were approved. First item was a request for the preliminary plat approval for the New London Acres subdivision for the Romanesco development. The preliminary plat documents were reviewed by the commission. Motion was made by Stillman, seconded by Noel, to approve the preliminary plat plan, which was attached, and that motion carried seven zero. Following that, we had a request then for a preliminary covenant approval for the London Acres subdivision, also for the Romanesco development. Commission discussed the preliminary covenants for the New London Acres subdivision. The only change would be to delete the reference to Alagame County and insert Wapak County. Motion was made and seconded to approve the preliminary covenants with the change of counties, and that motion carried seven zero. Next, we had a request for a variance to allow for a second driveway apron to be placed at seventeen oh nine Division Street by Mike and Becky Sheaugh. The Sheaughes are requesting a second driveway apron be allowed at their property. There is already a second curb cut at the location done when Division Street was reconstructed. The Sheaughes are requesting this be allowed on the basis of a hardship so they can unload a handicapped child at the residence. Motion was made and seconded to grant the variance, and that motion carried seven zero. Our next meeting will be on August twenty-sixth at five P.M., and the meeting adjourned at five twenty-eight P.M. I would move to approve the ordinance to amend the official map. This is the second reading.
Sir, second. Mike, second, or Dennis, second, okay. Motion was made to adopt the ordinance to amend the zoning map, second reading, is there any questions or comments on that? Not, all in favor, all right, please cast your ballot. Tom? Cast your ballot. All voting yes, motion carried.
Then I would move the proposed amendment to chapter ten point zero five five regarding public nuisances, this is also the second reading.
Second.
Mike? Dennis? Okay, motion was made to adopt the ordinance amending the municipal code, ten point zero five five regarding public nuisance.
Will that.
Fred?
Will that make it easier, more effective to enforce things, I'm thinking on Ashgrass Street, for example, as well as.
That's the impetus for the change, not that particular spot.
Pardon me?
That's, there's been a number of places that.
Can't get it over.
Have provided an impetus for this change, I would say, and it should make it simpler to.
Any other thing I'm thinking of is on Pearl and Beacon, so.
Being specific, I'm just saying that between myself and the retired zoning administrator, we.
What's that, Marv?
Came up with this proposal.
Long overdue.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any other comments or questions? If not, please cast your vote. All voting yes, motion carried.
And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ron. Under economic development, there was no meeting in June. You do have a copy of Wapak County Economic Development Report, Corporation Report, in your packet. We also have copies of the minutes and reports for the Housing Authority, the Library and Museum, Place and Fire, Utility, Cemetery, and Building Inspector for the month of July. Any questions or comments on those? If not, let's move on to reports of officers and events, announcements to the public. First, under Council President, I have nothing to add. City Administrator, Mr. Leoni?
The only thing I wanted to add is I'll be going to the Rotary to give a speech on the nineteenth, so anybody wants to show up, please show up. Also, I just got back from visiting with Mukwa, the Mukwa City Council. What I'm hoping to do is get out and meet all the townships and build that communication between the city of New London and these townships. And last, no, so tomorrow night I'll be going to Liberty. Last, I've met with a couple of council members, I'm hoping to continue meeting that, day or time, nighttime, daytime, whatever is available, so we can talk and kind of get a better vision moving New London forward.
Very good, thanks, Lou. All right, next, Utility Manager, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Dave. First, I just talked about the storm from what I liked, the storm was unique. Been about nine years since we had one of that size. I'd take a minute to thank my staff, the street department, police department who helped us on the first weekend of the storm, helped us clear streets, protect people. And then I'd like to thank the citizens, our customers, for the patience for the inconvenience they were put through. And we handled the storm fairly well, I believe, and we were not the only community that was yet, but we were able to get through it. And we did not have any assistance beyond our own staff. With the storm situation, we came through Friday night and Saturday, some of the big power companies were hit Friday night, and they pulled a lot of contractors. As the storm came across the state, Baron took some on the western part. Wisconsin Rapids had forty-three crews in there, their cost was two point six million dollars with the utility damage. We fared at about a hundred and thirty-four thousand, so quite a bit of difference, but our storm this time has been many structures with a lot of little service work requiring a lot of electricians, took a lot longer timeframe, but I'd like to commend my staff and everybody in the state for what happened, it was really well done. The Romanesco subdivision was mentioned, approvals, they did the sanitary sewer work, I'm sure Chad will report on it, but we also did the water for us, and we had them put the three-phase power extension from the high school out to the subdivision. So all that is there in place waiting for the subdivision at this point in time. Our southeast substation rebuild is one of our big projects that's moving along nicely, most of the station work is pretty well framed up. We're doing the directional boring and hydrovacuuming for the ductwork for all the underground feeds. It's an overhead station now going to an underground feed system. We hope to wrap it up tomorrow night or first thing Thursday, so then at that point we'll have cables to pull, and I hope to have that in service by mid-October. Our AMI metering program to do electric and water has been progressing. We've made great strides, the electric is actually done, and my water department is only sixty meters behind to be finished, and I thought they would be six or eight more months at least. They've made great strides in getting their work done as well, so all in all, that's where we're at, if utilities is quite busy, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thompson. I would like to echo Steve's comments, I'd like to thank Steve and his staff, Chad and the city staff, for the quick response to that storm. I was really amazed as we were driving around later that day, that when we first start driving around, we saw the power lines were down, all the trees in the middle of the street and so forth. I thought it'd be days before we'd have power back and be able to move through the streets. And they worked late into the night, they got the power up very quickly that day yet, the streets were cleared so people could go to work the next day, so great job, please thank again your staffs for a job well done. Speaking of Director of Public Services, Chad, Mr. Earth?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, I'll just echo the same thing, it was a very unique storm, working with one of the utilities staff, they were rock stars, just working throughout the night, so again, thanking utilities, thanking our staff for everything they got done, and we're still continuing with cleanup processes. This week, we're finishing up with the curbside pickup. We did ask residents to have any remaining brush to their curb by Sunday so we can do one more pass through the city, and we're working on that right now, so we'll be finishing up the curbside pickup because we've had plenty of other things that we gotta start catching up on in our summer program for work to do. So the brush sites, we did close down the temporary brush sites, we do still have open our normal brush sites behind Florahill Cemetery, so if people want to drop off, they can still drop off there like normal, but we did close down the temporary ones, we want to clean those up and move on. We still will have our fall curbside pickup in October, so if you didn't get everything out and you don't have the access to get it to behind Florahill, we will still, it'll be a little bit, but in October, we still will have our normal fall brush and leaf pickup coming around in October. Road projects, like Steve talked about, the Romanesco project along Clot Road, our utility extensions were finished, we are waiting to hear from the contractor about the road reconstruction, we'll be doing the paving project in that area where the road was ripped up for the utility extension. Cedar and North Ridge projects, we are, we have the utility work, the spot utility repairs done, we're waiting to hear back from the contractor about the spot curb and gutter, and then the mill and overlay of that street. I was hoping to hear something by today about some timelines, but everybody's swamped, everybody's busy, and we're waiting to hopefully soon get those projects underway for our summer project season. Down at the New London Aquatics and Fitness Center on Saturday, the staff down there will be hosting a dive-in movie for kids, they'll be showing the movie Bernie the Dolphin, so can't say that I've seen it myself, so I can't, you know, comment on the movie, but something good for the young kids, come on down there, bring your floaties or your noodles and watch in the pool. Movie starts at seven o'clock P.M., and it's two dollar entry fee, so great, something for the younger kids to come watch a movie down in the pool. Next week is our new session for summer adult, for our exercise classes for adults, this leads into the fall session, so if you were looking for any adult classes and you were thinking about taking a start in the fall, now's the time that the classes will begin for the next session, and that, again, will lead pushing into September, so if you're interested, sign up this week, the late fees begin August nineteenth, so don't delay there. And then lastly, our recreation staff is putting the finishing touches on our fall program guide, which should be available in the next few weeks, so keep an eye on that for all the fall programming, starting after the, after school begins for the season. Also, on the agenda, we had a agenda item that we took off just because of some timing things, if the council can just hang around after the meeting, I want to see if we can do a special, a special Board of Public Works, Finance meeting, and City Council meeting to get a couple of things going for some upcoming projects in the future, so if you guys can stick around, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chad. Bob?
Chad, are you still allowing non-residents to take brush up behind the cemetery?
We haven't allowed non-residents to take brush up to the cemetery, so that's not something that.
No.
We've authorized by any means. So if the non-residents have questions, obviously they can call their town board and see where their outlets are in the future, we're working on some things, but. In the future, we're working on some things, but as of now, um, that's where, that's what our recommendation would be.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Chad. Next, Chief of Police, uh, Chief Julia.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, first of all, I just wanted to thank all the staff for having such a successful national night out this last week. Uh, we had Data Star land here. We had quite the group of children and parents and stuff show up, and it's a great time by all. So hopefully next year, we'll have our fourth annual one in August, so hopefully we'll see more people out there. Also, with school getting ready to start here, I know people are probably like boo, but, um, we always have problems each year with, in front of a few of the schools with traffic and stuff. Make sure to look at your, uh, handouts and stuff that are given to your families and stuff, and if you have any questions, you can always call down to the police department to see how you're supposed to drop off and pick up the children. We set up these rules and regulations to make sure that the children are safe, so they're not running in front of cars and stuff like that, so please work with us, and, uh, it'll flow much smoother, so we'll see what we can do to keep the kids safe. Thank you much.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. All right, Fire Chief, uh, Chief Olver was not able to make it this evening. Uh, so next, motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel matters. Fred, so moves, is there a second?
Second.
And Mike seconds. All in favor?
Aye.